Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Arts Magnet School Workshop for the Waterbury Board of Education. We'll begin this evening with a moment of silence and remember all of your concerns Thank you. Mayor, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
(inaudible)
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. A special welcome to Dr. Werner Ruffin, our first official Board of Education meeting. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing none, I would invite the mayor to come up.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
So I thought I'd stop by quickly and give you an update on where we are with the superintendent contract negotiations. I met with Dr. Ruffin Monday morning, and we have, I think, worked out all of the details of the contract. Corporation Council has submitted a draft to Dr. Ruffin for her review, and one of the areas, though, that I was looking for some input from the board is, we talked about performance-based contract. I did some research. I asked Scott Morgan to do some, and basically it seems that the school districts who have those provisions go something like this. So you hire the individual, and then the board would set the goals and expectations for the first 12 months of employment, the next, then the following 12 months, 24 months, and then the following 12 months. So the contract term is three years, and I didn't know how you wanted to structure that, how you wanted to do that, what you were looking for. I don't think, Linda Whibley doesn't think, we would put the details of what you want in the employment contract, but certainly there would be a fiscal stipend if those performance goals were reached, you know, in the 12th, 24th, and 36th month. And so I need to know, and you need to know, and Dr. Ruffin needs to know more than all of us, what's expected of her, and so I thought maybe you guys could mull that over tonight, and, you know, we would figure it out. But I have, you know, we've spoken about the fiscal component of the contract and the health coverage and other things, and I think we're there. Just was going to hear from the board tonight or after your discussion tonight, tomorrow, see what you thought were reasonable expectations and things like that. I know this is new to us, so you might want to think about it, too, or you might want to do some research yourselves and see what the expectations would be. And of course, we need to make sure that Dr. Ruffin agrees to those expectations so we can move forward. I did tell Dr. Ruffin, as far as I was concerned, she started work on Monday, July 9th, and she's been here all week, and so, you know, obviously without the contract, but we're really, we really are, we're there, as far as I'm concerned. I think we could wrap this thing up tomorrow easily, if not early next week.
Great.
And if anybody had any questions. I know you all want to know what the terms and conditions of the contract are, but, you know, I'm reluctant to reveal any of that information until we have a signed contract.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I would agree, I don't think we need to talk about it until it's a done deal. Secondly, for the, just like the timeline of this performance portion of it, is that something that needs to be done on day one, or, well, I was gonna say, because we only have about half of our group here tonight, and I didn't want to short anybody.
Thanks.
But if we did it quickly, but maybe not tomorrow morning, that would be appropriate?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I'm very sure and comfortable that you're, this board is going to hear what Dr. Ruffin feels, what you're, you know, when you set your goals and expectations, and we can work that out in the up-and-coming days or weeks.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
And, you know, just to build on what Commissioner Van Stone said, I think it's important to have expectations and then kind of have a mutual agreement with the superintendent, you know, what those goals are, are they realistic, you know, that kind of thing. So I envision working with the board and the superintendent to come up with some performance measures that are objective but that we mutually agree upon, and that align eventually with the superintendent evaluation, because we've done some work on that. I know Commissioner Van Stone and Commissioner Harvey and all of us here have felt at times that our current evaluation system really doesn't tell the tale, if you will. It's not really aligned with agreed-upon goals. It's kind of like an objective thing that doesn't really reflect the actual work that a superintendent is doing. So those kinds of things come into play. So I agree with Commissioner Van Stone, maybe if we could work on that as kind of a vehicle to determine the goals.
I completely agree, Madam President. The little bit of research that I've been able to get, and I've asked some friends of mine in other districts who have similar contracts, they tie it into the evaluations.
Okay, good, okay.
The annual evaluation.
Thank you.
And if you get a successful or a positive evaluation, that usually reflects on the ability to release a stipend. Those are the ones that I'm familiar with.
Great.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
And look forward to hitting the ground running.
Thank you. I will say that, on my way out the door here, because I know you guys want to get out of here as badly as I do, probably. I had probably the best 90-minute discussion with Dr. Ruffin that I've had in a long, long time with a department head. She's extraordinarily friendly, knowledgeable, and passionate, and really excited to start doing some good work here in this district. I can't tell you how pleased I am with this board's recommendation and decision, and I was very pleased to be a part of it all. I wasn't here the night that it was announced, but I can tell you that I think that you've done an unbelievable job and selected the absolute best possible person for this district at this time, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Next on the meeting is the request approval of the beverage exemption statement for the healthy food certification. I don't know who's doing that. Mr. Brinker, are you doing that one?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, you're up.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is our annual request for exemption for healthy food, for beverage, and for food items also. Requires your vote at the next board meeting, which we'll forward in to be in compliance with the law.
This is pretty straightforward, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Any questions? Commissioner Van Stone.
Any significant changes from any of the others we've ever done?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No changes? Okay, good. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you doing the next one, too? Request approval of the food exemption statement for the health, that's the...
I apologize, Madam President. One, number one is for food, number two is for beverage.
Okay, so...
So they're the same, just for a different type of ingestion.
And we need, we'll need two separate votes?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, you can go now.[610.04][610.04](laughing) All right. Number three, clerk informs us that Doreen is indisposed this evening, but she did send the document of the monthly expenditure report, and if you had any questions, she would be glad to answer them, and she's, if you give your questions to Carrie, she said she will get back to you. And she apologizes that she is indisposed this evening. Do you have a question? Okay.
I do, and I'll certainly email it tomorrow. My main concern is that we're looking at ending the year well over $2 million short on our salary budget. That concerns me, that's why I have my budget for next year in front of me. I'm trying to do some math. It worries me that we'll look at that same shortfall next year. That's a big number.
It is.
Right? That's not a couple thousand dollars. There's also some positive numbers that I also look at, that maybe we over-budgeted for, that I'll forward those questions to Doreen as well, because really, when you look at it from a management side of things, just because you're underspent doesn't mean you did a good job either. We can't put aside funds if we're not going to need them. So I'll forward my questions, but there are concerns I have with basically what is our end of the year. I mean, I guess we'll get a June, but pretty much May is our end-of-the-year report, so I do have a few concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll be sure to get that question or any other ones, if you think of them, send them to Carrie, and she'll get them to Doreen. Okay, next is the request approval of a sub-recipient contract with Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board. I don't see Melissa, so we have Chief Academic Officer.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Melissa is celebrating a birthday with her daughter tonight, so that's why she is not here. I know. That's what I told her, but we let it slide this one time. So this is a proposed contract between the Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board for a stipend for students based on their IEP, for targeting students that are age 16 to 21, really for $595 to be placed, up to 125 students to be placed into an area of interest for a career based on their IEP. We do this currently, right now they don't receive a stipend. So what the Northwest Board would do with us is help the students take a career tracker, career audit of what they're interested in, work with the district, district will do the placement, monitor that placement, and then students would also be enrolled in the Federal Disability Employment Grant. If they're 18 or older, they would help the students fill that out. If the students are under 18, they'll work with their parents to do that. And then the Workforce Investment Board, hopefully as the students graduate from us, will then help the students then gain employment as a result of this. So the contract would be for placing approximately 125 students with a stipend for about $595 into areas of their choosing, starting mostly with students that are a little bit older, starting with our 21-year-olds, 20-year-olds, 19-year-olds, and then working our way down. And that's the, that's the basic proposal.
And this is being totally funded by the Workforce Board?
100%.
Wow, that's wonderful.
Through a federal grant.
What's the relationship between the, so actually, it's the same program that we have now, but they're just gonna get a stipend, or what's the difference?
Yeah, right, right now, we don't do a major amount of work with the Investment Board through this, but, so this would gain a relationship in that aspect of it, but then also, we don't provide stipends currently through the district, so the district would receive the money through the Investment Board, through that federal grant, and then we would give the students that stipend as a result of their internship.
Great, wow. Commissioner Harvey.
Yes. So how are we selecting the students? Is this something that we say to the students, oh, this is available to you?
Yep, it's usually based on their IEP, and so certain students with certain IEPs, they would get placed into job situations, other students may not. And so, again, I think the criteria from talking to Melissa was, number one, you have to look at the IEP and see if this is a student who usually qualifies for that type of pull-out during the school day to go to a job placement.
Okay.
And then number two, starting with our older students first, who are closest to entering the career workforce possibly, and moving down in age from there. So IEP and age are really the two big criterias that we would start with.
All right, so that means that every, every school or every program would look at this as an option, because we want...
Oh, yes.
We want our kids with disabilities to be as independent as possible.
100%.
So is this, how do we keep track to make sure that everyone is doing this, that they're, you know, recommending our kids for this?
Right, so right now, you know, we currently have this practice in place for our students that...
Okay.
It is in their IEP, so this isn't something new. We place a lot of students in job situations during the school day as part of their IEPs. This is really the first time of working with the Investment Board and providing a stipend for the students.
Yeah, well, that's the new part of it, yeah.
Which is the new part.
Absolutely.
So we currently track how we do it, and certain students and certain programs are better fits for this type of, for this type of workforce training.
Okay.
And so Melissa's department, this is really the only additional kind of workload on, the department is keeping track of the stipends and making sure...
All right.
That we are diversifying, to your point, the students that are in all types of different programs. And again, based on their IEP and their age is really, is really kind of what we do right now, currently.
And I think also, we, any opportunity we get to share this with our parents...
Oh, yes.
We should do it that way as well.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Is this program only for those students that are currently in public school system, or...
Again, so we serve all students with IEPs in the city, so I can check with Melissa. I'd have to check with her to see if the students that we serve that would qualify for this program or not. Again, it would be based on their IEP. Without talking to her, I don't want to speak, you know, without it, but I would say that if there was a student that's already qualifying under their IEP that is in a program that we're servicing, would most likely be also eligible for this.
Okay.
But I will make sure I get that solid answer to you.
Okay, thank you.
Just to dovetail with that, could you give us the universe of students that might be eligible for this? I mean, do we, how many students do we actually have that are within this age range?
So in terms of special education, in this age range, off the top of my head, how many would qualify with an IEP exactly that would fit this bill? I can't say for sure, but we usually have a little over 100, 200 students that...
Oh, okay.
We kind of place already in these type of training situations. And so this is kind of in our, in our sweet spot right now, to hit most of our students up. But again, we may not be able to reach all of them all the way down to 16. We'll be able to reach the vast majority, especially the older ones that have, that have already kind of hit their credit requirements, but we're required to provide special education to the age of 21.
Thank you. All right, sounds like a fantastic program.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Okay, seeing no further questions, we'll move on to number five. You're up again, and tonight we have with us Karen Rainville. Good evening, Karen.
Hi, Karen.
She's our school readiness coordinator at our Office of Early Childhood. And just a little preview to this, this presentation, well, are you gonna talk about who you gave this present, okay, so I won't go. Okay. No, go ahead.
For some reason, it's taken a little while. It's right. So this presentation, or a version of it, was also delivered at the end of the school year at our third annual, what we call the barn retreat, convening of about 30 early childhood educators, community members, philanthropy, anyone involved with early childhood education that can actually fit in the location. We get there as a way to not only judge our action plan from the prior year and how we did on that, but also establish the upcoming action plan for early childhood education, not just for Waterbury Public Schools, but for the city of Waterbury. And we are lucky enough to have Kathy and Jim Smith to donate their barn, which is, if you've ever been there, is a little bit nicer than what you would think a barn looks like, but it is a great location to kind of get away and be really focused on the work for the day. And this presentation was to kind of give us a, like a nice dipstick into what we did for the current year for early childhood education and what our next steps are, and so we wanted to provide that information to the Board of Education tonight for you. And so we're gonna start with school readiness, which is, again, I can, I can say this and be confident that it did take me a good amount of time to figure out school readiness. There's Title I preschools in the district, there's school readiness preschools, and then there's alliance grant-funded preschools in the district. So Karen is our arm, we, she's, we are the fiduciary for school readiness, that provides about 10 grantees, school readiness, 13 grantees, school readiness seats in their locations from the YMCA to TEAM to ARC, and Waterbury Public Schools is also a recipient of that grant. And so school readiness doesn't just apply to WPS, Waterbury Public Schools applies to about 13 sites, 13 different locations within the city. And so Karen's going to take that part in what she's done so far, and then I'll take the second half of how that melds with the Office of Early Childhood for the Waterbury Public Schools.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight. So we started off our third retreat looking back at our charge from the 2017 retreat. We had a real interest in collecting and analyzing data around our early childhood system and looking at our protocol for placing children in school readiness seats, something that had historically been a challenge in Waterbury with many seats remaining vacant, and so that was high on our priority list to look at that. There were conversations around creating a universal registration form, and so making it easier for families. Right now, a family chooses to enroll in any one of the 13 sub-grantees, each of whom have different registration forms for families. So how do we systematize that and make it easier for families throughout that process? Identifying and looking at universal standards and curriculums for all of our programs. The State Office of Early Childhood does not mandate a curriculum for school readiness programs across the state, just mandating that they are aligned to our early learning and development standards. So we wanted to really dive deep into what we had and take our analysis of that. And then looking at our professional opportunities to be able to meet the state standards for early childhood credentialing. And so I'm gonna highlight a little bit from that charge to where we are now, looking at the utilization and the recruitment. We identified as one of the challenges that programs were all holding on and hoarding individual wait lists of families. So if a family went into the Y and the Y was full, they would take the family's name down, and the parent would leave until they had a call. And that system wasn't working for the family, it wasn't working for the community, and what ended up happening is we had vacant seats but had families that could have filled them. So we've created a universal database for all parent inquiries, so regardless of where a parent enters the school readiness arena, that information is captured with detailed notations coming back to my office so that we're able to follow up with families to ensure they're getting the proper placement, close to their home, close to the bus route, full day, part day, whatever best meets that family's needs. And since we started that, we've seen full utilization of our school readiness spots in the last year, which is a huge accomplishment for us. And you can see on the graph the trajectory of increase, the increase in the slots over time for Waterbury. As slots became available, when the state had a lot of money to put into school readiness, Waterbury benefited from that, and you can see the rise in the number of spaces of children that have been able to serve. One of the other big things we're focusing on is utilizing Power School for all of our community-based sites for many different reasons. On the top of them would be transition kindergarten. Doing this will allow a child's full record to continue as they transition from a preschool program, school readiness program, into the Waterbury Public Schools. That's early intervention strategies. Whatever has happened in that early childhood program could then transition seamlessly into the public school. Attendance is another big issue that that would help with. Right now, a school readiness program receives funding for the month for a child as long as they're there for one day. We know that that's not gonna help a child be prepared for kindergarten, and so while it's perfectly acceptable in terms of how programs are funded, it's not what we want to see for our kids, to prepare them for kindergarten. Power School would allow us to, on a daily basis, go in and look at children's attendance records and absenteeism rates so that we can intervene with families and try to figure out why they're not attending, how can we support that, is it a wrong program, et cetera. So we've compiled a grant application, and we're actively looking for funding to be able to implement that in our programs. Professional development is something we've really honed in on very strongly. We've had more than 32 professional development opportunities offered to staff in school readiness programs, including the Waterbury Public School One program, throughout this past year. We had 360 participants in our early childhood mental health symposium, and really have a targeted focus on social-emotional strategies and professional development around building social-emotional skills with children and families. Again, our social-emotional focus, we have become and adopted ourselves as a pyramid community, which means we're looking at developing a system of tiered intervention for our youngest students. We are investing heavily in Tier One and Tier Two, which are universal strategies to promote positive outcomes for children, and we're also building and contracting for some Tier Three strategies for children we know are in need of that extra support to be successful. We've done that, and we've had our first cohort of 24 teachers who have gone through the process, which has included six professional development days, as well as three onsite coaching activities for every teacher on, in their program on that site with a, with a hired coach. You can see some of the outcome data, which we were really excited about in terms of teachers' knowledge and understanding of the pyramid model, demonstrating a clear understanding, you know, pre and post were significant. 64% in the beginning of the program could not identify Tier One, Two, and Three strategies, up to almost 71% at the end of the program. Similarly, not able to specify a specific intervention at the initial tier. Beginning of the program, 82% of teachers could not do that. End of the program, again, 71% of teachers clearly could articulate Tier One and Two strategies, working with children in the program. We've increased monitoring of our school readiness programs and expanded our idea around what monitoring includes. It includes not only myself going out onsite and doing classroom observations, but also things like ECHRS, which is an environmental rating scale, State Office of Early Childhood coming onsite to do inspections, quarterly fiscal reviews of these programs, some of which are receiving upwards of a million dollars in school readiness funding, so there's a high accountability for their fiscal management. Program audits, we've done full curriculum audits of every school readiness program, including Waterbury Public Schools, so we have the data to be able to move forward this year. Policy reviews, attendance reviews, et cetera. So we've really spent a lot of time looking at how to monitor these programs, hold them accountable for the standards, and make sure we know they're in high-quality environments for these children. Again, we, some of the big accomplishments, the shared database has been pretty significant, full utilization, not only of our 17, 18 slots, but additionally being able to request additional 24 slots from the state. That hasn't happened in Waterbury in...
A long time.
A decade, I think, quite a while. So that was, that was a big thing for us. We were notified, we didn't get them. The state has decided to, to give all of those spaces to competitive school districts versus priority. So priority districts across the state were not able to take advantage of it, but we are poised to, should any new ones become available. Next steps for us, again, rolling out Power School and finding a way to fund that. We are continuing our pyramid coaching work. We have two cohorts this year that are starting in August that will include 24 in each cohort, including not only our community-based teachers, but Waterbury Public School teachers. Waterbury Public School teachers, our community mental health group. So we have our early childhood consultation partnership, who are going into programs and providing supports around social-emotional. They're going through the exact same training so that they will have, everyone's on the same page, delivering the same message, as well as some of our private centers who are, who don't receive state funding, but they're serving Waterbury children in a childcare center. So we want to bring them in and help build them and their capacity to provide quality service to our children. Continuing with our social-emotional focus and again, looking at bringing in some BCBA support for the children that are struggling and need some Tier Three interventions while we're building out one and two.
Thank you, Karen. And I should mention that I represent the district as a school readiness co-chair. And our president, Liz Brown, represents the city as my fellow co-chair for the School Readiness Council. To transition from school readiness, there is also the Waterbury Public Schools, as you know, opened the Office of Early Childhood at 30B Church Street, which not only houses school readiness, but also houses our Birth to Three program, our preschool program, our playgroups, our PPTs for students of that age. And so just to give you some basic statistics from what's happened at the OEC this year, as you can read from January 2017 through March, through May, excuse me, May 2018, we've had over 2,700 visits to that site. We've had 247, we started screening children in February as they came in to apply for school readiness. 247 screens have occurred and we have 30 planned just for July of this year. Screening students is a really important way to do something, we do something called the speed dial, to quick screen of the student, to test for where they are developmentally, which will allow us to provide interventions very quickly rather than finding out a few months into the school year. It's like, oh, okay, so now then put them into a process. It's to screen them and to get them, the interventions as quickly as possible, even possibly prior to them even starting the preschool experience. So that screen has worked out nicely for us. We've had 232 PPTs. We've had 144 Birth to Three referrals, up from 132 last year. And we've had 120 EIS referrals, which is really, that's from the community-based sites, that's early intervention. This is really, we may not have been screening prior to this, but also any student that may just enter the program, that the teacher is seeing something that's happening there developmentally, that they need early intervention. It could be academically, socially, emotionally. And so those referrals come to our Office of Early Childhood and we, as a team, respond out to provide that early intervention, provide the teacher with strategies as well. Some of the OEC changes that occurred this year, as we talked about, is screening. We did a revision of the hardship policy with parents, is that there was a hardship policy. And Karen can actually speak a little bit more closely with that because she worked with Amy on it. For our parents, that it's pretty clear in the legislation about hardship policies and what each site has to do to be able to collect fees and not collect fees. It is a little confusing for us as a district. We have Title I, which is obviously free through Title I. We have Alliance, which is obviously free through Alliance. And then there's a weighted scale for those that are in our school readiness programs to have to pay a certain fee based on your income. And Karen has that off the top of her head if you have questions about what that hardship policy is. Is really to make sure that our parents are really receiving as close to a free education in our school readiness programs as possible to align with our Alliance and Title I classrooms as well. And again, providing professional development in conjunction with Karen's office. Social-emotional learning was a big focus of our OEC changes this year. And we've had parents sign up for something called the Remind app, which is an easy way. We know a lot of our parents, the phone numbers change on a consistent basis, but the apps on their phones don't change as much as possible. So there's an app called Remind that parents can get a quick update on anything that's happening that has to do with early childhood and/or the school and/or the office and/or preschool. And they get that message right onto their app, that many of you have that on your own phones, that a banner comes up and tells you something's going on. That's what we, there we go, we have a board commissioner that already has it. So we have our parents that signed a consent form right when they sign up to get that message, which is, seemed to be working out nicely. We have achieved additional NIAC accreditations for our Maloney Magnet School. We're pretty sure Rotella is going to get it. We just haven't got an official word yet. We've developed a strategic plan for achieving NIAC accreditation throughout the district. We want all schools, all classrooms to be NIAC accredited. And I want to skip the third bullet, but I will remind us that we've revised the toilet training policy as well. We've provided EIS support and assessment training for district schools. We obtained $19,000 grant through the Connecticut Community Foundation to help with the social-emotional learning work, to provide that pyramid model. So we went out, wrote a grant, really asked Amy to write the grant, and Amy succeeded at writing the grant and received that. And we also had, this is our third year of the implementation of a Liberty Bank Literacy program that we run at Maloney Magnet School in the summer for our early childhood students. And so that will be finishing up this year as well. Similar to the next steps, as Karen said, social-emotional focus is going to be the continue. It seems to be the one that we have struck with the most success at the early childhood levels. And working with our accreditation and really looking now at our Waterbury Public Schools curriculum for preschool, it's time for a change at that level. And so I know Liz and I and Karen and Amy have been working about how to not only fund that, but also get it done in a timely manner so our earliest students are really receiving the best education at four years old.
And I think you should share with commissioners where you presented this information and you were kind of a model community in Connecticut to the Alliance districts.
We did. We presented to the 30 Alliance districts. And I think even at that meeting, we were, the other districts were invited, but the 30 Alliance districts, we were asked by the State Department through word of mouth that what we were doing here in school readiness and preschool to give a presentation. Karen was there, some of our community partners as well, to provide how we're leveraging school readiness within the district and how we're working as a community, not just Waterbury Public Schools separate from the community. It just, it simply boils down to this, they're going to be our students. So the better we do, not just in Waterbury Public Schools preschools, but also the other community sites, the better, better chance for success as they, as they enter our system. And so we did, we did present to the other 30 districts, had very good feedback on that as well.
Yep.
And the social-emotional institution.
I have to say, you know, having been the co-chair of the School Readiness Council now for seven years, it is really a sea change in leadership and setting goals and really holding everybody accountable. And I'm really excited that we are, as Darren said, trying to really create a high-quality system with all those components. So thank you very much. I know how hard you work and the whole staff. And we'll have to give you a tour of the Office of Early Childhood. And keep up the good work. This is fantastic. Commissioner Vanstone.
Just a quick question. I was glad to see the slide on monitor. We had an issue a year, maybe two ago. I can't recall now. And so it sounds like we're learning from that event and we're moving forward to keep tabs on those that aren't maybe under our roof. Is that, is that a true statement?
Yeah, Karen's reports are impeccable and she does get to those sites quite often and does not leave any stone unturned. I can tell you that two sites this year were made aware of some fiscal mismanagement and were put under advisement through the School Readiness Council to reimburse the state based on some errors that they made unwittingly, unknowingly, but what were made. And those were rectified quickly. And we're talking about $10,000, $60,000 worth between the two sites. And they were, they were rectified through Karen's diligence with her work, yes.
I'm happy with the financial catch. Other items would be certainly more alarming to us, I believe. So I appreciate that improvement and learning from the past. So thank you.
Commissioner Adorno.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening. I just have a few questions. As far as the pyramid model for the coaching, as far as timeline, how long does it actually take for the training for the teachers to fully understand and be able to describe the, like, all three tiers?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the cohort itself has a model of six trainings that are half-day trainings. They are staggered. So you'll have, you'll have a training, you'll have an implementation time at a program, the coach will go in, then you'll have the second training. So we stagger training, coaching, training, coaching, so that continuum happens throughout that year, which, however, that's just a piece of the social-emotional work. Tacked onto that is a significant amount of other professional development in service, all related to social-emotional. So it could be a literacy training that we will weave in social-emotional work through either the choice of children's literature, the vocabulary, et cetera.
And I also think it matters the starting point of the teacher. So some already kind of mastered it in terms of understanding what the pyramid model was, but then it's about implementation now in the classroom and about understanding those strategies and pulling it off. And we're also honing in on really, because these 13 sites also have directors, so we have to make sure the directors truly understand so that when they go and they evaluate their staff, they can have a real cogent conversation about the work.
Yes. So the cohort that just completed this year, going forward, we don't drop them. So we have two professional learning communities that happen, that will happen this year, bringing back those who finished Cohort One in a less time-sensitive way, but bringing them together as their own professional learning community to continue the growth, as well as a professional learning community for the directors of those programs.
Thank you. You did answer some of my other questions. I appreciate that. Another question, how many BCBA's are currently in our schools and approximately how many students require their services?
So that we currently don't have any BCBA support in our community-based programs. I'm going to turn it to you for the answer.
Yeah. So, so, I mean, the big, the big push for this was, is that, you know, as we learn more about social-emotional learning, the sites are saying, you know, we really need support with those Tier Three students at that level. And so the district, and we do get quality enhancement grant money through the state through this grant. So we've, as a council, decided that that is definitely somewhere where we want to be able to put some of our funding towards the district, also on our level, because it's something that we recognize as a need, is adding, we've added through the budget, as you may or may not recall, we added a social worker in the budget, last budget cycle. That social worker is actually dedicated to our preschool level and working with our community sites because they really don't have the resources we have. And so through the quality enhancement grant, we will have support of one BCBA, not full-time, but a support, and then also social work support as well.
Good. And I do want to reiterate the, I think, the importance of having that support from a BCBA.
Oh, yeah.
Having a child who's, who's really had one and benefited from that program. So I, especially for the Tier Three. And then the final thing, I know Darren, I think we talked about it back before in the meeting, but just for clarification, are you still accepting three-year-olds for pre-K for early childhood?
So the three-year-olds, the three-year-olds for preschool, right now, it became difficult with the buildings that currently exist in the district, let's just put it that way, in terms of toileting, in terms of readiness of teachers, in terms of the ability to be able to pull it off, having that second assistant in the classroom. But we do. So we still have three-year-old programs. We still have three-year-old programs at our Bucks Island X. And so we're, we've actually expanded that a little bit there. And so we have three-year-old, part-day, and in some cases, full-day. But for school readiness students that are of regular education, most of those are part-day programs, which is what most parents, when we surveyed them and asked them, at three years old, they were still looking at maybe not sending their babies just yet for a full-day, but a part-day program. So we will continue to have that at the Bucks Island X, yes.
Okay, including for the specialized students?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That a bit, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, guys.
Okay, any other?
Yes, thank you.
Vice President Harvey.
So Karen, it's good to see you.
Thank you.
Darren hinted that you, you know, you have on the top of your head the hardship policies. I constantly get questions from the community about how do we determine if the child will be in our, one of our schools, the early childhood in our schools versus, you know, our private, our community. So how is that determined?
That's, that's a great question. So when a parent comes into the OEC, calls, goes into one of our programs, we start with, you know, a questionnaire of, are you looking for full-time, part-time? Are you working? Do you need transportation? You know, a whole host of things to really get a picture of what the best placement option would be for that child. And then we offer the parent options. So we look at where their zip code is. These are the three centers that are closer. If you need transportation, that automatically goes to Amy to look at what's available between the Waterbury Public Schools. So it's really trying to just talk with that parent to see what's going to be the best fit, either our community-based sites or our school site. The fee situation, so the state of Connecticut sets the sliding fee scale for all school readiness programs across the state. So we don't have any leeway in terms of what we have to charge. Where we have leeway is if a program, if a family has a hardship, every program writes down and has a policy on, is it related to medical bills? Are you late on your mortgage or rent? And then the administrator of that site can waive, choose to waive the fee based on documentation of that hardship.
Okay.
And that's happening across the city.
Got it. Okay. That holds me. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
See you in August.
Darren?
I guess Darren, you're, oh, no, Mr. Gorman is up next. I see everybody realizes the food has arrived, so help yourself. Karen, did you get your cookies?
I don't think there were any cookies over there.
Get out. Oh, my God.
There are cookies over there? No.
This is another one of those tech mags.
Okay.
Other than a few photos, everything that I was going to show you on this, basically you have in front of you as well. But Madam President, thank you for, for having me. Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin, just to kind of bring the year to a close in terms of health and physical education, wanted to bring you some updates on the accountability provisions for the ESSA Indicator 11 to share, share with you our performance this year on the Connecticut Physical Fitness Assessment, which is the basis for the Indicator 11 scores. Very pleased to announce that we've done it again. For the second consecutive year, we've exceeded the state median for all districts, not our ERG, for all districts in the state of Connecticut, something we're very, very proud of and something I think that we can all celebrate. I think that we can all celebrate. The, how that translates into Indicator 11 points per school, Darren has that information, was released maybe a month ago, and I can send that to you, the by-school numbers, if that's something that you really want. Okay, all right, absolutely. But we wanted to make sure that, you know, we shared this with you, we had approximately fifty-four hundred students tested and twenty-nine hundred passed all four components of the, the testing. It's not an easy thing to do, they're all, the standards for those vary by age, so it's somewhat complex, and that's why it's very, very difficult to pass all four. I would add that this is a snapshot, this is not a growth model like some of our other testing is now. There are discussions at the state level about trying to move towards a growth model, but as of right now, this is almost like the old cap test where it's just, you know, it's a photo-in-time of a specific group. To sort of head off a question that you may have, you may see that some of the numbers tested exceeded the enrollment. The enrollment number is based on the end of the year, this was something that we learned from the State Department of Education this year, they were going by the enrollments at the end of the school year. And so, the majority of our testing took place in the fall, we did get authorization from the state to go back to try to find any students we had missed, and those students who had transferred in as well were counted in that number tested. That's why the number tested exceeds the enrollment number that you see, okay? Just to also highlight a couple of other things that happened this year, we have continued with the KidSite USA International Eye Screening Program for elementary students. This year, there were three thousand and thirty-six eye screenings done, six hundred and six eye treatment referrals were made by the KidSite staff. I would say to you, we had discussed this at School Health and Wellness Council, a number of those students who get referred, there is no follow-up, and that's, that's a shame. It's, it's a big problem, it's a problem that is not unique to Waterbury, it has also been experienced in Philadelphia and Los Angeles, other places that they've done this program. And I'm continuing to try to seek some type of financial support from Connecticut Community Foundation to see if we can't put a program together to help those parents have those students who are referred for eye treatment actually get treatment.
Is that, excuse me, is that because the federally qualified clinics do not do eye? Because if they went, I mean, they could, could go to a, you know, our, because that's a sliding scale, if it's a matter of cost.
Right.
So, I'm not sure if they do eye exams and follow-up.
Some of it, some of it, I believe, is, you know, parents have difficulty with access or aren't sure how to navigate the system is probably part of the issue. Monetarily, it's also an issue for many of our parents. I don't have a blanket answer or solution to the problem, I think it's multifaceted, but we're gonna see what we can do to try to help that, because from what we're seeing, upwards of eighty percent of kids who are referred, there's never any follow-up.
Wow, that's pretty serious.
That's, that's significant.
Because if you, okay, well, it's a very serious issue, we'll probably have to...
And as we know, if you can't see, it's very difficult to learn.
Yeah.
Very difficult to learn. Okay, a couple of other highlights I'd like to share with you, we had the Mayor O'Leary's Kids Marathon at the end of May, again, another record-setting performance, we had twenty-six hundred kids this year run, we had almost three hundred parents and other adults run with them. If you've never seen it, I invite you to come next year, it just gets bigger and more sophisticated each year, it's, it's a lot of fun. Yeah, he says, "I have to run." If I have to run, then I can't shake all their hands. The one thing I'm proud of is we've been doing this for a few years now, I have shaken the hand of, or high-fived every kid who reaches the finish line, so that's kind of what I do that day, but...
Joe, about how many volunteers are involved with that?
Oh, oh my goodness.
Because it's, it was amazing, the number of adults there and the police and teachers, I mean, it was amazing.
Yeah, it's, we begin planning for that the first week of school, and it continues throughout the year. Jim O'Rourke does tremendous work, Mike Dalton in that regard, we call in all of our partners around the community to help us with it.
It's amazing, yeah.
Yeah, and it just, it works. And each year, we, we try to add another layer to it, it's something else for the kids to enjoy, for the parents to get out of the, the experience. So, it's a very inspirational thing, it's one of the things we love to do, so. Another thing that I'd like to bring to your attention was, I was gonna show you some of the photos, I don't know if Paul can navigate it, but we had done the K-5 intramural program with tennis, we've been financing this now for three years through the USTA Connecticut and USTA New England. We had close to ninety students who participated in this during the month of May, it was part of April, May, and into the beginning of June, and they were doing intramural tennis with kids as young as grade-two. And at the end of the program, on June third, we brought them all out to the Middlebury Racket Club, there were students from Walsh, from Washington, from Tinker and Wendell Cross. And we were able to get sixty students out there to basically have a playdate and play students from the other schools in a top-notch tennis facility. The kids had a wonderful, wonderful time, it was a tremendous experience for them, one that I know that they're gonna remember for a long time. One of my selfish reasons for raising this with you today is because I will probably, as we arrive closer to budget time this school year, I am gonna ask for your support for the district to adopt this program. We're kind of running out of the grant funds to do it, they've supported it for three consecutive years, and there's an expectation on their part that at some point in time, we transition that to something that, that we own. So, we're looking somewhere in the range of five thousand dollars to maintain those four programs at four schools and service about a hundred children, so you'll be hearing from me in the future on that one with, with that request. One of the other issues that I wanted to make sure and give you an early heads-up on is in regard to the current graduation requirement that is pending. This is Public Act seventeen forty-two, and that's the Act Concerning Revisions to the High School Graduation Requirements. As of right now, this has been postponed several times, but as of right now, I believe it is moving forward, so unless that changes in the next year, the incoming class of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty will be required to amass twenty-five credits for graduation as opposed to the current twenty. And one of the things that impacts my department, as well as it's going to impact your decision-making, is that it will increase the high school graduation credit from its current one-point-zero Carnegie Units or credits to one credit in physical education and one credit in health. We're already moving forward in terms of designing and expanding the health curriculum to have it be, to reach that level. We're looking at a hybrid model as we currently do at the eight forty health and conditioning class, because that's a wellness model, if we're asking children to, to try to pursue wellness by having regular physical activity as well as doing research on health topics, it makes sense for us to teach that course the same way we're advocating for them to adopt that habit. So, rather than spending ninety days in a classroom talking about health, it makes sense to break that up, so that there's certain, there's activity periods some days of the week, there's pure health instruction other days of the week. That's how we do the eight forty class, this would probably be the best way to try to totally utilize the staff that we have. I'll also be talking with the principals during the next couple of months and trying to plan for this. I don't know what type of staffing increases that will require, but I can promise you that we'll try to mitigate that as much as we can and to utilize the staff that we have available to try to meet those requirements as best we can. Sort of as a follow-up to that, I've had discussions with President Brown about how we can make health and physical education a more vital part of our district improvement efforts. And I just want to share with you kind of where we are now, at the end of the packet that I gave you, has a breakout of those minutes of instruction that kids receive currently in our district for physical education and health. It's not a lot of time. Combined, it's one-tenth of one percent of instructional time in a child's pre-K through twelve career. We do the best that we can with that, but as always, I mean, it's, it's very easy for me to advocate for something that I feel so passionately about, but I even had this discussion with Dr. Ruffin earlier today, I am a firm believer from the bottom of my heart that if we spend more time working on health and the physical well-being of our students, that's the missing piece to drive improvement in student performance. And there's a lot of different ways that we can do that that don't cost money if we really want to pay attention to how to get that done. And we're willing to do whatever we can in our department to help advocate for and to facilitate that, so. I'm available for any questions that you have.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President, that was a pretty good lead-in for me to ask again. Physical education always seems to be the one that loses out when we do scheduling. We've extended math time and the days only so long. So, I think I'll look over at Darren, you knew this was coming, and so, one, what do we plan to do for scheduling to meet the requirements that are put for us, as well as doing the right thing? And the second thing is, does this lead us down a road that our school day could be getting longer?
I'm a big proponent of that second piece, we have, as you know, through negotiations, part of that negotiations packet when we go through, compared to other cities in the, in the state, we do have a shorter, shorter day. And I would say at the elementary, it's a little bit, it becomes difficult with the requirements. Now, if you were there for the dozen or so discussions around how do we get science in? So, you know, we had to take, we had to take from math and literacy to even get science in for next year. So, there are some ways, Joe and I talked about this, some ways in elementary, from brain breaks to a certain block right in the morning where we could induce, introduce some more exercise, get the brain and the heart and the, you know, the, the breath pumping right in the beginning of the day. But, you know, library, media, art, music, and PE have about similar amount percentages of time spent on those, and we all know that those are not specials, those are essentials. I mean, a lot of students come to school for those specific reasons, because that's where they excel at. So, try to, try to fit in with the requirements now, everything that we know is, that's good for students, it's, 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 there are some ways you can do it within the classroom, there are some ways you can introduce certain topics in language arts, reading, mathematics, that you can introduce exercise as well into that area, require professional development. And so, Joe and I talked about that, when you, when you put on the list of things that we need professionally developed in the teachers, this is on the list, it's just where is it on the list? You know, do we do this instead of introducing the new science curriculum? We can't, you know, you have to be able to have professional development on that. So, Joe and I talked about some ways we can do this in elementary with the current schedules unless we have a longer school day. You know, but really secondary seems to have right now a little bit more of an opening to work with teachers on how to introduce this in a pedagogical way within their classrooms, not just putting it on the PE and Health Department and those teachers. And so, right now, that's the focus, based on the priorities that's happening. But in the end, a longer school day would open it up for some possibilities to introduce those brain breaks in a schedule, exercise in a schedule. You know, right now, our elementary schools, many of their schedules say, you know, English Language Arts Reading starts at eight forty-five, ends at ten o'clock, but then ten o'clock starts mathematics, well, it doesn't really work like that, you know, there is a transition time, and it's kindergarten, it's usually pretty, pretty lengthy, so it's, it's a puzzle. But, you know, there are some unique ways for us to Band-Aid it for now, a more permanent solution is a longer school day.
Vice President and then Commissioner Adorno.
You know, Joe, I'm wondering, I'm sitting here and I'm looking at the health education instruction, and I'm looking at the grades, et cetera, and I'm looking at, okay, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade, is there a portion where we discuss current health issues such as what we're dealing with, with opioid abuses, et cetera? Do we allow time for that, or do we, is there any?
We, we fit it in, and that's a product of ongoing professional development, it's also a product of the fact that we try to make sure that our curriculum is current, up-to-date, and we're using online resources, we don't use textbooks, we haven't used textbooks for a while. In addition to that, we also had hosted the US Attorney's Office, had done a series of presentations at all of our high schools on Chasing the Dragon, which is the story of a, a group of opioid users and the impact that it had on their lives, their families, so on and so forth. There was a follow-up to that in the substance abuse prevention classes, where the kids had an opportunity to talk about what they'd seen in the film, and so, I, there's just so much that we can cover in the seventeen-day pullout, but we do our best.
Well, yeah, I mean, I understand that, but I just, with this, you know, epidemic almost, I think we do an injustice if we don't at least mention it at some point.
Right.
So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, other, oh, I'm sorry, Darren, just reminding you too, we also had a couple of parent presentations at the evening.
Oh, good.
So, parents could come in with their kids and talk about it as well. I, I do want to make the point, though, I know that the opioid crisis is really in the forefront of the news today, but as a lifelong prevention educator, I know that opioids are not necessarily the greatest risk that our school-aged children have. The risk is those precursors that lead to that, which have always been, there's really no change, there's no, no new news about this, it's tobacco, it's alcohol, it's marijuana.
Right.
And, and in an environment that is becoming increasingly accepting of marijuana use, that troubles me greatly, because those gateways seem to be getting larger.
Okay.
So, so I, I guess my point is we fit that in, the opioid, but we're also working on those other areas that indirectly are working on those preventative factors for kids to try to
Right.
...address the same issue.
All right, so my point is, is that it's opioids now, it may be something else later, do we allow a segment where we talk about what's, what's now, what's current?
Yes.
You know, so if we do that, then that's great.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, that's continuous, that's ongoing, any new information I share with the staff, and we just continue to build off of what we have as the most available and current information.
Great, thanks, Joe.
Yep.
Commissioner Adorno.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Gorman, good evening, as far as the eyeglasses, is there a follow-up to actually someone calling the parents to find out what is the underlying cause as to why they're not bringing their child to get retested or to get the glasses?
That's sort of the piece that we're missing. KidSite comes in, they, they do the screening, they turn all of those results over to the school nurse, the school nurse makes those contacts, the school nurses have an awful lot to do, as I know you are very intimately familiar with, and so, I'm sure that that's support that the school nurses could use to have someone do some of that follow-up for them, it's very difficult to do when you got a roomful of sick kids that you're trying to take care of. to take care of.
Yeah. And I appreciate you trying to seek either Connecticut Community Foundation to find, you know, financial resources, but it was just interesting to find out, is it a transportation reason? Is it a translation? You know, what was the underlying cause?
And I'm not sure we'll find that out unless we can find a way to put someone in charge of doing that, you know? And then to start building a database is exactly, that answers those questions. But right now, we don't, we don't have the capacity to do that level of follow-through. And I think you'd need a dedicated person to do that. And that's why I'm trying to seek a grant that will allow us to, to put A and B together to start accumulating some information on that.
And we can further discuss that during the Healthy Community. And my last thing, more like a comment as well, I know your motto is health moves minds. And I actually agree, I think when you ask a lot of the students, what's your favorite subject, the majority are going to say gym. And I personally, since I started my, you know, physical, you know, goal and really participating with my family, it gives you more clarity. You know, it really gives me a lot more energy, therefore it helps me with a little sleep, a little because, you know, my insomnia can't stop. But I have to agree with you, I think it's important, and I think the older the students get, the more stressed they are, especially the high school kids who may be taking college courses. And who doesn't need a recess? I think even teachers need a little recess. And what better way than to implement, you know, physical education? Not only that, I think it will also, you know, kids with maybe behavioral issues, that is a way of them to really de-escalate certain situations. So when you let that energy out and you get back, now it's time to focus. So I think it's very important to really try to implement and not really forget about the, you know, the older kids and, you know, obviously it's going to help with the obesity as well if you go look into the BMI survey. So I appreciate you making the effort and Darren, and looking into what the options are because I think, like you said, health does move your mind. And I think it's important that we continue that.
The, the research in that area is just overwhelming at this point. That, you know, the more you move, it's, it's the one human activity that stimulates brain growth, synapses, you know, forming and mental agility. It's the only human activity that will do that.
I'm going to hit the gym right after this meeting. I'm not even kidding you, but it's, once you develop that lifestyle, it just becomes a normal, they know, they laugh at me all the time because I'll try to go to zumba or go to the gym. But I think once you develop that lifestyle and really educate the kids, some of them may not have a safe backyard or be able to do that at home. So it's good that they can depend on our school.
I mean, one of, one of the points that I've made when I've talked with staff about trying to embrace brain breaks and energizers in a more active classroom, finding ways in the day to, to continue working in your content, but to make it more active, is that teachers respond to, when I say to them, how often do you teach sitting at your desk and not moving? Well, never. And so my response is, there's a very good reason for that. You think better on your feet than you do on your bum. So kids are no different.
Yeah, absolutely. And thinking, just really maybe try to just thinking outside the box. Not, not everybody likes physical activity. You know, that's the only time I don't mind sweating is if I'm hitting that gym. But maybe a form of dance, whether it is zumba or salsa or a little meringue, just to teach them a different thing. So now you're, you're tackling, learning different traditions and cultures, but it's part of physical activity because dancing is, you're moving and you're getting a little mental break. So just think outside the box a little bit. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
It could be our teacher.
I'll leave the class.
It could be our teacher.
Would love to.
Can I just make one last comment?
Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, Joe, I just want to say that, you know, I remember saying to you that one of the things that I regretted when I graduated from Crosby and went on to college was that there was little physical activity that was offered, you know, in the schools. I mean, I took karate, I pursued that, but that I wish I'd had more, you know, I ran track, I ran, I did karate, I did weight training, and I did that all, introduced to that when I got to college. So it would have been nice if I had had the opportunity to do it when I was in Crosby. And I'm not blaming Crosby, that's my alma mater, I love my alma mater.
Mine too.
But, but, but I just wish I had gotten that from the Waterbury Public School System, a little bit more of that physical activity. So I just applaud what is happening now. I think had I had that opportunity, and back at the time, you know, it wasn't 100 years ago.
We would have sent you to the Olympics.
Yeah, I know, yeah. But, but it was at a point where, you know, you know, a time where I couldn't even take karate because I was a female, you know? But when I got to college, I was, opened, the doors just opened in terms of what I could do, running track, doing karate, going representing the United States in karate and things like that. But I wish I had gotten that when I was in high school, you know? So I just applaud, you know, the efforts that we have now and that we encourage all of our students to be physically active because, you know, when you get older, you'll wish you had been physically active. So, so I think it's just great what we're doing. I just want to thank you. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. We'll look forward to working on health goals for our district and mental health goals for our, for our district. Thank you for your work.
I think I had sent it to you once before, but I was going to show you that small clip of the whole school, whole community, whole child, which is a direct response, as you say, how could we perhaps work that into our district improvement efforts? I'll send the link to everybody again.
Yeah, that'd be great. I think they'd appreciate it.
I couldn't pull it up on there, but, okay.
Okay, next is chronic absenteeism, discipline. We have Dr. Paul White and Chief Academic Officer Darren Schwartz.
Yes, so we provided this report earlier in the year, as you recall, I think we were at Willbe. So just a very brief kind of update on the data and then we'll take questions on it. As you recall, chronic absenteeism is 10% or more of absences. So if we're in school 182 days and you're absent more than 18 days, you're chronically absent. If you come to us and you attend school for 60 days, anything more than six days absent is chronically absent. Okay, so pretty, pretty simple idea. And I apologize that this isn't a better report for you to compare 16, 17 to 17, 18, but I can do the, the quick math for you. Based on the numbers that we got that are yet unofficial, but as close as we have for right now until the state certifies it, is last year, we had a 16.9% chronic absenteeism rate. This year, we have a 13.6 chronic absenteeism rate. If you recall, last year, we were definitely number two in the DURG and so moving towards that 10% mark, which was always the goal. If I recall correctly, five years ago, we were at about 20% chronic absenteeism. Severe chronic absenteeism, there is a misprint on your, on your sheet. It is at, for severe chronic absenteeism, this is for 20% or more, we're down to 2.9% of students. It was 3.8 last year. So moving in the right direction and I would say that the big, you know, changes, because obviously student populations change from year to year, schools get more sophisticated in their approach to chronic absenteeism. I have to give a lot of credit to Mr. White, Dr. White, excuse me. Dr. White, at the high, at the high school level, is, I'd like to point your attention to that, compared from one year to the next, is the high schools that really made the big difference in the jumps. So I know Dr. White worked with those high school principals in terms of catching up on running those chronic absenteeism teams and really getting down to the student level, finding out what was happening in their lives that was preventing them. Was it anxiety? Was it fear of being bullied? Was it fear of, was it having to take care of a sibling? What is it in their lives that was happening? If it was medical or whatever? And intervening with the support staff there, having those mentors at each school, making sure students feel like there was somebody they could go to. It was a good start. We still, obviously though, our high schools are, also have the highest numbers still. So we made, I think we lost the water weight after we're continuing with the exercise talk. We lost the water weight in the high schools, but we need to continue working in there because it is very high at that levels. So a reduction as of the, so far, from 16.9% down to 13.6% for chronic absenteeism. And I'll just hit discipline and then take questions, is that okay? Mr. Roy, anything to add to that?
The main, main things in terms of strategies, as I always talked about, is we've been refining the chronic absenteeism teams, the cap teams over the years, and getting better with how we look at it. As Commissioner Van Stone challenged us a few years ago about getting to those root causes, those are the things that we, our teams across the city are trying to focus on, what are the root causes, what's going on so that we get this down to individual as well as having some fantastic attendance counselors in the buildings who are out going, doing the home visits, knocking on doors and really challenging families as well to help support getting our kids in, changing it from, oh, you're out today to when secretaries are calling to, can you still get your child in? It's nine o'clock, can you still get them in? So again, trying to continue to push this mindset that one little thing can't, doesn't have to make it a full day out of school and pushing that and continuing to overcome whatever challenges are necessary to push them forward.
The last piece is the discipline comparison. Whether you agree with the, the new policy and law changes, you may recall that pre-K to two, we were cited by the state for the amount of out, out of school suspensions we were administering to pre-K to second grade. This year, we had zero suspensions in preschool. In K to two, we reduced that number from 284 last year down to 71 for this year, which was about a 75% change in outside suspensions for students. That was, I would say, due to the basis of also educating our teachers and administrators on the new law, requiring that the administrators ensure that they're working with their directors at the elementary level to say, you know, this is the situation, there is only two reasons you can outside suspend a student at that level is for, if it was sexual nature or physical. And so, it's a really educating and working through the directors, ensuring that all the proper interventions were really in place before we administer suspension. Because in the end, the outside suspension at that age level doesn't change the behavior in the end. It's really the support services and working with the families that, that really make the difference at that level.
And again, from the director's point of view, when, when we are contacted about need to suspend, we check in with everything that's been done. And really the biggest point of when we do a suspension, it's more about making sure that we have everything in place for when the student returns so that he or she can be safe, he or she can thrive in the school. So yes, the suspension is inconvenient, but it really sometimes required so that we can plan and make sure that we can do everything right for the child upon their return. And we limit it to as few days as possible. We don't do 10-day suspensions or anything like that, obviously, at that level.
And the last piece is just looking at discipline in general. Obviously, there's, there's several ways we could slice this. We could give you office discipline referrals, we could give you the amount of counseling sessions. All those go into that tiered intervention model that you're aware of, that we do for students. Suspensions are kind of the, the topic and it's, it's a tricky one to discuss because sometimes with the reduction of suspensions, it seems like, you know, we've talked about this, is, is are we still holding the line with discipline and having, making sure our teachers feel safe and supported and understanding? Do they have best practices in the classroom? That's a tug and pull still for the district. And, and, and one of the things that if you notice and you really analyze the data and you look at the changes, and I apologize, it's just up to May 31st, but when discussing this with the administrators, you know, Crosby's a really good school to highlight. So they had an increase in inside suspension because they want to keep the kid coming to school, even if they had an infraction, but a huge reduction in out-of-school suspension. So yes, they had a 24% increase in inside suspension, including half-days, but the out-of-school suspension was down 40% because in the end, it's about what effect is that really having on the student and their behavior? And then what really are we reaching the student in school suspension? Had conversations with Ms. Copi, she knows that getting them back into school, getting them their work done, but also counseling the student while they're there is really the key to the behavior change that we're looking for. If you look at the high schools, and I'll give Dr. White credit again, that out-of-school percentage, 40%, 37%, 33%, 42%, 41% reduction, some cases, some increases in the school suspension. But if you could look at the counseling and the work they did in restorative practices this year, because that's really where we had Jackie Davis working the most, where in the high schools, having that huge impact on how, yes, students did something, how do you restore that though? How do you get them back to a place, they may have broken, broken one of the policies or one of the rules, how do we get them back into a place where they can make it right? And so also part of this policy, part of the work also was with dress code and skipping. There was a reduction in trying to reduce the amount of skipping that was actually happening within the schools. There was, and I don't have it off the top of my head, a lot of students that were getting suspended, still a lot this year, getting suspended for skipping. It's one of those things that's like, you really got to, it sometimes leads to other things and what do you do if a student keeps skipping and skipping and then we don't do anything about it? So we still have a lot of suspensions, like hundreds of suspensions still for skipping. But there was a reduction there of trying to keep the students, knowing that if they feel safe within the classroom, if we're working with them on what skipping leads to, there was a reduction there as well. I'll let Dr. White take it from there.
And a lot of the credit, it goes to adult actions. That's really the key to this. Adults being very vigilant, being in covering hallways, teachers being at their doors during transitions, and just continue to build the adult-to-student relationship so they know what's going on, students finding people to talk to as they go through. And also students willing to tell adults something's about to happen around the corner and adults being vigilant about making sure that they're there to prevent those things and constantly working towards that. So again, it is the adult's actions, it's our teachers, it's our partners, those are the people making the steps so that we can have the reduction and then building the relationships with the students.
Great. Can I ask, what type of professional development are we kind of thinking about as we're looking at, you know, planning for next year? Or we see areas where we want to increase?
So somewhat similar to what we're doing in preschool, social, emotional work, but also restorative practices, continuing that work. We've gained a great relationship with Joanne Freiberg. She's from the Connecticut State Department of Education. She is the state guru and the model. She has come in and trained not just administrators, but teams of teachers at each building. She's coming back in August to work with our administrators and will be here on a continual basis, but making sure that not only those teams of teachers and that administrator are trained, but now implementing a model for the district about what really is the expectation around this, while at the same time, building that culture and climate within a school that Paul talked about, about making sure that adults are being vigilant and jumping in. And at the same time, making sure that teachers feel like they're safe within their classroom, the adults feel like they're safe, that other students feel like they're safe within the building at all times. It is a balancing act. We don't want restorative justices to be a code word for we're not disciplining. That, that is, I've heard that before and that is not something that we take lightly. We want to make sure that if students are having serious infractions, that there is a discipline policy in place and that there will be discipline administered. But in the end, we also need to make sure that students are also getting the help that they need for why they acted in that sort of way or what's really the root cause for what's going on in that, that child's life. And so it's really a balancing act between those two and that's what we're working on currently for the professional development plan.
Great. Any other questions? Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. Could you please explain what is going on at Window Cross and General Alley?
Yeah, sure. So that, you, you took the words out of my mouth when I went to talk to the ILDs at that level. Few of the things that, from what I heard from them, because I have not been able to address this with the administrators of those buildings as of yet. Now, Window Cross, huge increases, obviously going from two out-of-school suspensions to 16. What this chart doesn't show is that if there are two or three students that may have transferred in, they could own a few of those suspensions leading up to it that may have been transferred into one of our BDLC programs. And so some disaggregation around this data. And so, some disaggregation around this data is really important. I know General Alley, there was definitely a specific case of two students that, I would say racked up a few of those out-of-school and school suspensions, leading to that out of, BDLC placement and/or State Street placement. In another way, in terms of that is, the elementary schools were the last ones to get trained in restorative practices for this year as well. And so, that's something that we're looking at. I have talked to, I did talk to Pam Bain when she was here, she's since retired, but I've also talked to Noreen Buckley specifically about some of those increases at those schools, those two specifically, so that when we come back in August, August 14th is our first administrator day back. This data is going to be looked at with the administrators, and they're coming up with strategic action plans. Not only did I then, what does this number mean? Was it specific students? Was it a change in culture within the building, or a change in policy with administration? And how do we restore that back? But as of right now, I don't have the answer without talking to them, because they're off for the summer.
Thank you, Madam President.
Commissioner Adorno?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just full of questions and comments today. I don't know if this is a, I guess, my comment or question was in regards to the Senate bill back in July 1st, number 453, the Public Act 1889, which is an act concerning classroom safety and disruptive behavior, which was vetoed by the governor. What supports, because, so obviously, I understand the classroom safety amongst, you know, teachers, staff, and students. You know, I don't understand the whole gist of the whole process, but what, and I know as leaders, you guys really try to help, but what other support is there for those teachers and staff, and even the students that maybe were affected by that student's behavior before that student returned? If that student was suspended, we want them to feel safe and comfortable that when this student comes back, that they're not going to be, you know, in another area, that people are getting, you know what I mean? I want them to feel comfortable, because they do have the right to be there and get their education, and for the teachers to know if that student, you know, has an IEP, that make sure that if there's a behavioral plan in place, if not, you know, the proper protocols are being taken into effect.
And that's part of what comes out of the restorative practices, as well as the work that is done on the school side during a suspension, to make sure that, one, that the class is restored in their own sense, that issues are processed with them, that students know right from wrong, and try to keep them from repeating behaviors themselves, and also make them comfortable so that when their classmate does return, because ultimately that classmate is coming back, so that, and that's where the restorative practices come in, that the student can return to the community, their, their classroom community.
Thank you. And, and I know you had mentioned that as far as the restorative practices, but again, this happened like in July, so, you know, the beginning of this month, so it was just like, i- is it working? Is it not? So, I just wanted to make sure that everybody feels, you know, safe, because you shouldn't have to, as a parent, you don't want to have to worry about that you're sending your child to school, and, and obviously, that's the day and age that we're living in, but.
And I think there, there's still a ways to go with that. I mean, obviously, and you have to be careful not to tell your students, well, nothing's ever going to happen again, because it's not always necessarily the case, depending on if the student is struggling with a certain disability, or, and then, you know, the documentation needs to occur so that they can get the right placement. It is a difficult conversation. It is difficult, especially for the parents, you know, as a parent who's had children in classes with certain students, it's, 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 it's hard. It's a very hard situation, because you want what's right for the student that's, that's suffering, and that's doing this, that obviously has something going on in their lives, but also the other students who clearly are being affected as well. It is a delicate balance. I think our teachers do the best job they possibly can in those situations. They definitely advocate for both sides, not only for the student to get help, but the rest of the class. But we do have a ways to go to making sure that each teacher has the capability to have that restorative conversation, and has the skills to be able to utilize in their classroom.
Thank you. And, and just to take it a step further, as far as the restorative practices, even for, you know, help at home, because if that child does have a behavior, what if the parent is single, or whether it's not, you know, working parents, it's difficult to even comprehend. So, even, you know, suspending that child and going home, what services is that child and family having, you know, as a support for the home before they return to school, so that they're getting the proper, you know, message across as well? So, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, you know, when we talk about restorative practices, Madam President, you know, I, I hope this board will, you know, as we look at these figures, and, you know, Dr. Ruffin made a comment when we were interviewing, during interview process, that restorative practices needs to be just the game plan for the district, okay? It just needs to be, you know, what we do on a daily basis. We have Jackie Davis do a lot of things, and I know what we do around restorative practice, restorative justice practices, is paid by a grant, but we really need to look at, looking at grants that will assist that. She does a lot of stuff. She does a lot of things. We have her not only working in our schools, and she started terrific, terrific job, but she goes out in the community. She was out in the community, we had, you know, anti-bullying sessions given by community members. And so, I would hope that we would really look at what assistance she needs in helping our students, you know, with restorative practices, and that we take on a climate that, like Dr. Ruffin said, that it's not just a program, it is a way of life in our district. So, I'm just, I'm just hoping that we can, you know, as we now set, try to set some goals in terms of the district, that we really look at that, you know, cultural competency, restorative justice, all that plays into school climate, and making sure that our schools are safe, and that our kids believe that the schools are safe. I mean, we haven't really looked at, you know, trying to avoid using bullying, but bullying is a key part of what we really need to look at. So, I know we're going to do some things later on with the community, but this restorative justice, we really need to stop tinkering around the tea kettle on this, and just really go after it, because this is what's going to help our schools with school climate and helping our kids feel safe, and our teachers. So, just a comment.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly is a mindset that requires a skill set.
Yes. I like that. I'm going to use that.
All right. Well, thank you very much again for all your hard work, and we look forward to continued success. All right. Next on the agenda is Dr. White, what a very early college opportunity.
This is, this is awesome. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna walk away, but this is, this is, this is awesome.
You could stay there if you want.
Good evening, again, Commissioners. Before you, I handed out a memo of understanding to go with North Tuck Community, North Tuck Valley Community College, for an opportunity to do a program which is similar to the PTEC model, which I believe three or four of the board members had visited in Brooklyn, New York. It's a model where during the time of high school, you'd continue to take college courses, and with the possibility of being able to complete high school, as having your associates already, having credits that can transfer onto other schools down a particular path. We're looking to pilot this with Kennedy High School this fall, and expand to other schools. Crosby has expressed an interest as well. So, essentially, this program, as I said, is no cost. It's funded through the Pell Grant Program, which creates a little of a time crunch that will get to what I, what I'm requesting the board this evening. We are working so that students will be able to have these opportunities to take these courses. Right now, we're working around general and liberal studies, so that that creates a variety of opportunities for students as they decide what they're going to do next. One of the things we know at 15, it's hard to know exactly what you want to do, and a lockdown too far down the road before they know exactly what they want to do. So, we're looking at that. We are trying to bring in education focus. The dream would be that they would start at North Tuck Valley, finish up at UConn, and come back home to be our teachers here in district.
Sounds good.
So, we're trying to get that going in the direction, again, it is no cost. We're looking for students, all types of students who do want this interest and have this. It's not going to just be the SOAR kids at Kennedy, or the ACE kids at Crosby. It will be for students who do want to pursue this, who are engaged in the process and want to work towards this. The big ask for this evening is to come to a consensus on this, because in order to get the federal funding from the North Tuck Valley, we need to have this in place next week.
And I did talk to Corporation Council, and with the consent of the board, if we are unanimous in this, they would accept that as a vote, and it has to go before the Board of Alderman, I believe, on Monday night, to be within that 30-day span. Is that, do I have that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, are there any questions? Commissioner Hernandez?
Dr. White, this program is going to, I heard you say it's not just for SOAR and ACE kids. So, who's going to push that out, that it is for all the students that may be interested?
That'll be done with the guidance counselors, that'll be done with Kennedy administration, who've already started trying to recruit kids to be ready for this. For, and that'll always be gone out, as the brochure goes out, it's, the initial parent meeting was cast out to the entire Kennedy freshman class, for them to discuss this and see what the opportunities are. So, it's, that's going to be one of the focus that my, my office does, as well as the leadership at the school, to make sure that we are selecting kids who cross the gamut.
Okay. I'm going to be looking, looking at that.
I know you will. I know you will.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Van Stone? You okay? So, is that okay? Could we have a consensus to move? Pardon?
Consensus pending, right, pending any further insignificant amendments by the Corporation Council, if there's any language changing, nothing major would, obviously.
So, the motion is to accept this? No motion, no real motion? It's just a verbal consent? Thank you, Madam Clerk. Everybody in favor?
Yes.
All right, all right. Okay, thank you. We've got a consensus.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
And good luck.
Thank you, Dr. White.
We'll be watching.
You know, just, just one, one thought I'm having is that we do have our Bridge to Success community partners, and these are the types of things that we need to get out there with our community partners, so that the families are hearing it from different, from different venues, as Commissioner Hernandez is saying. So, maybe we need a broader, you know, outreach kind of thinking with our parent liaisons and our community partners, so it's something that we really should talk about, so that the word is on the street, as, as you were, as it was.
Exactly.
Commissioner Van Stone?
You can answer first.
Oh, no, for saying absolutely agree with that, and a number of fantastic life outcome opportunities that we're trying to develop for our secondary students, including additional partnerships with the IMTI group, and a variety of groups, so that our kids are having as many opportunities as possible, so, and this will be it, and finding ways to get that out, whether it's through the city Facebook page, creating a secondary school page to get the message out, that we could get people to subscribe to, absolutely.
Yep. The only thing I was going to add, Madam President, is down Jackson-Madison, Dr. Ruffin has done this and done it pretty well, so if she hasn't had the opportunity to weigh in on the memorandum of understanding, I think she should obviously be given that opportunity, not here, but, you know, before it's signed off on, she's, she's piloted it, and she's ahead of us already, so, her insight would be invaluable.
Great. Okay.
I was smiling when I saw it.
I thought Dr. Bailey probably was somewhere, too.
All right. It's all good. Next on the agenda is Mr. Branker. Request approval of amendment number one to the contract with Glen Terrace Landscaping Inc. to provide playground equipment.
Thank you, Madam President. These are for the three playgrounds that we're doing this summer at Walsh, Generalley, and Chase Elementary Schools. The contractor requested that we change the final end date to October 24th. Instead of August 24th, he was concerned with the $1,000 a day penalty for not meeting the final completion. As long as we have the substantial work done by August 24th, and we can use them starting school on August 27th, we're okay with that.
Okay, thank you. I mean, any questions? Commissioner Hernandez?
So, as you know, I'm at Walsh almost every day, and I just want to say, I was told that once school was over, the construction company came in, started tearing down the old playscape, and it looks, what they've done so far, looks really good. I can't wait for it to be finished. It does look like it's going to be a little bit bigger than the other one, so I'm really excited about that. So, thank you.
Thank you. It looks great, doesn't it?
It does. It really does.
Yep. Thank you.
We're forward to visiting it. Great. Okay. I think you're up again on Reed School Environmental Testing.
Yes. As you know, Reed School was built on a brownfield site. There were several industrial companies that were located there, and the site itself was remediated, new soil was brought in, it was capped. However, we've been monitoring with wells since the building was built, continuous monitoring. We use HRP Associates as our company. This last test, they found a significant increase in the level of zinc, heavy metal zinc. It is in a well. They believe the level increase was caused by the strong storms we had just before they sampled the test, so they're going to go back and sample again. However, the level of zinc is significant, is determined to be a significant environmental hazard, and had to be reported today through our attorneys, Pullman and Connelly, to the Department of Environmental Protection. We prepared a letter that the mayor signed today, that will go out to parents tomorrow, all 500 or so parents at the school, and will send that electronically to the staff. The letter does confirm there is no health hazard to students, to staff, to any people at all at Reed School. The, there is no lead, excuse me, there's no zinc in our water supply. The water that was tested is water that's a runoff, comes down on the great brook from Lakewood Park. They don't know the source of it. It could have been existent there, or it could have been come down in the brook itself. But, as you know, the brook is either capped with concrete or fenced off, and is not available to any humans. In fact, the brook does run pretty close through here underground, almost right under us right now at this point. But although the, the lead is a significant environmental hazard, according to the state regulations, there is no hazard to any health at that school. And we will continue to monitor, and if anything changes, then we'll adjust whatever plans we have to make to remediate the site further.
Okay, any questions? Okay, sounds good. Sounds like everybody's on top of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests. Do we ever get that? I know Commissioner Vance, we had tried the Zimmerman, is that, did we take care of that? Okay, thank you.
There was an alternative site available.
Thank you very much. All right. And superintendent's notification to the board? Anybody have any questions about it?
I do.
Okay.
I know it's only a notification, and we don't vote on it, but I'm just wondering, do I read between the lines that the involuntary transfers from Enlightenment 30A and State Street 30A is the announcement to this board that we have officially made the decision to swap those two schools?
It's not an announcement, Commissioner. We announced that, that we were going to do that at a meeting at Driggs earlier this year.
No, when we discussed it at Now, when we discussed it at Driggs, it was put on hold because a number of us had concerns, even though it wasn't up to us to make the decision.
You're correct. The move has been made. The principal in, which was the former St. Lucys Building, that was State Street, is now located at State Street itself, or used to be, and the Enlightenment program is moved to the former St. Lucys Building at eighty-eight Greg Street, fifty-eight Greg Street.
Even though I brought up all the questions, that the same criteria to move it was the same criteria when we signed a five-year lease, I was told, was the important reason that the State Street community remain in that building.
Well, yes, sir. We did consider all the information we got at that meeting, and the decision was made to move forward.
So in a matter of one year, the criteria that forced us into a five-year lease agreement has completely turned around.
Well, I wouldn't say it's turned around, Commissioner. We still have the need of that building for Enlightenment. What we needed was more space for expansion of the State Street program, which was on Greg Street, and we didn't have that in the St. Lucys Building. And what we did, as we announced at that meeting, was we planned, and we will leave behind the special education middle school students that were formerly attached to Enlightenment, they'll be at the actual State Street location, Thirty-A State Street. So there will be less of a strain on the program with Enlightenment, and we hope to grow the State Street program itself to include out-of-district students who would pay tuition.
Well, that's, that's total news to us. We've never been told that before. So once again, you know, I just don't get how it could change so much in a year. I have to feel that there's more effort to change the story than the investigation to totally get out of a rental agreement, which has cost us millions of dollars, continues to. We signed a five-year lease that gave us a rental price that was greater than any of the previous years, and now magically, the same argument made for signing the lease doesn't seem to hold water anymore, so I could not be more against this decision. Absolutely could not be more against this decision. The Enlightenment school has thrived in the facility they're in. It is much more of a high school-type environment for that population, and I just think we're making a quick decision, which as far as I'm concerned, no good argument has been made to this board to make this decision. And it is kind of ironic that we actually don't have a voice in it. It is pretty ironic, where we have to set the budget that pays that rent, but we get zero input into how the building's utilized. It just, it's, I'm beside myself. This is just a terrible decision. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, there's no executive session tonight, and I make a motion, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Okay. See you next week. Okay.